And you are live.
Well, good evening, everybody. This is Tim Terranova, the proud superintendent of the Victor Central School District. Welcoming you to our first official virtual town hall for the 2021 school year. As I speak, we have finished 10 school days. No, your kids haven't gone to all 10 in person, most of them. But it is quite an amazing fact that we've been in school for 10 days already. Back in July, when we started to really do some significant planning around the opening of school. There was a lot of challenges and people were wondering if we could do this. But because of the incredible community and staff, we have been able to start off with school, doing a fantastic job with our staff and our community, and I'm glad to be here with you tonight. So the way it's going to work this year, because we are very hopeful that we'll continue to be in-person instruction, at least in the hybrid model for a while, we're going to do these town halls once a month. As you know, I will most likely also communicate with you either via a robocall or through an email once a week. And then, like I said, once a month, we'll have these town halls. We'll be doing them with some different guests on them and make sure they're as engaging and informative as possible for you. So tonight, hopefully, again, you're joining in via Facebook Live on our website or through Facebook, obviously. I'm going to talk a little bit about some major topics that we have to discuss. I will then get into the thought exchange. We had a thought exchange that went up this weekend with a simple question. What did you think of the start of the school year? And for your family and your children. So I'm going to talk about some of the major themes from that thought exchange after I go through some of our important topics. I hope to get to some live Facebook questions tonight as well. And as I've always said, since last year, we will get to the Facebook questions and answer them over the next day or two. And again, just make some comments around the start of school. So the first thing I'd like to talk about is just your your support as a community. As parents and guardians, you have been unbelievable. You know, the life of a parent is is really complex right now. You're starting the day, you know, with trying to figure out a health screening form and make sure your child doesn't have a temperature or symptoms of illness. Many of you are driving your children to school and dealing with some of the traffic challenges that we've been dealing with. Although in a very patient matter, and I know they're getting better every day. You're doing a food service form to make sure your kids have food. You're certainly dealing with the unique structure of having your kids here some of the time and then dealing with either daycare or supports for your children to make sure they're safe when they're home. And you're checking a lot of emails. We'll talk about that in a little bit as well. And you're certainly trying to figure out how your children's social, emotional, and their academic needs are being met with a lot of more support typically as a parent than you would in a normal year. So I just wanted to thank you first and foremost for your dedication to this. I know it's difficult. I know it can be extremely challenging and we will continue to work with you to try to work through those challenges, but just a big thank you because we are very grateful for the effort that you're all putting into that is significantly different and greater than a typical school year. I also want to thank our staff. You know, we've done this a few times and it just has to be repeated. If it wasn't for our transportation staff, the folks that are in our parking lots directing traffic before and after school, our food service staff, our maintenance and mechanics, and of course, our cleaning staff and custodians, there is no way we would be able to open up school and have a sustained school environment of in-person instruction. So a big thank you to all of those really critically important groups. I also want to thank certainly our teacher aides, who are the unsung heroes who do a variety of jobs every day to support our kids and our staff and cannot be thanked enough. And of course, our teachers and our leadership staff for their collaborative work together to put together the best we can and to continuously look at improving the ways we instruct and teach your kids. And so they're both supported academically, but also socially emotionally. You know, our staff came back to school incredibly eager and with a great attitude and a great confidence. And if it wasn't for this unique Victor staff, we would not be where we are today. And we would not be able to really start the year off. What I see from visiting all the buildings multiple times in the 10 days, just this great camaraderie between them and the students. And also just a great high competence in terms of their jobs and what they're trying to accomplish every day. I was at a leadership staff yesterday, a leadership staff meeting, which is about, I think, 15 to 18 of our instructional leadership staff. And at the end of those meetings, we do something called a good of the order, where each leadership staff member is able to say something positive about their experience. And I wish we could have taped it because for about 10 to 12 minutes, everybody went around and said some some things and recognized the different groups and the importance of those different groups from our custodians to our maintenance, to our mechanics, to our teachers, to everyone involved. And and it was just an incredible thing to listen to because if it wasn't for everybody really rolling up their sleeves, doing their jobs at the highest level and working together, we couldn't accomplish this and put ourselves in a position where we can accomplish even more over the next few weeks. So huge shout out to our entire staff of folks. I hope I didn't miss anybody. And if I did, I apologize because we are thankful for all of you. A couple reminders around health and safety at this time. Now, and this is actually tied to many of the comments that we received on our thought exchange. One is, you know, New York State mandates around social distancing. So we are right now at our maximum in terms of overall allowing students to come into the building. I wish I could tell you at this moment that we could have 20 to 25 kids in a classroom again at this moment and have everybody back every day. But we're not allowed to do that. It's not a decision by our district. It's a decision by the state in terms of their social distancing requirements of six feet or more, even with masks. So at this time, we're not able to bring kids back full time. I am extremely hopeful that if we continue with the trend, and I certainly don't want to jinx it, but the trend of the first 10 days where we've had at this moment, as of 638 zero COVID cases, staff or students as of this moment. If we continue that trend of having low COVID cases and are able to handle them through limited quarantines, then I am hopeful that over time, and I think we're all hopeful that we can get everybody back. But at this point, we're not allowed to by the state and it would have to be approved by our Department of Health of Ontario County to do that. And those that's where the decision lies, but we're in constant communication with especially our county. We appreciate what the Health Department has done for Ontario County. And I I know that we're all hopeful that we can come back full time, but that's not our decision at this point. I wish it was. A reminder that, you know, there's actually, I'm going to give you a positive and a negative around the cleaning and the personal protective equipment that we're using. So a positive is these buildings have never ever been cleaner. And of course, I don't speak from experience because I've only been here a few months, but as I talk to the veterans among us, these buildings, these classrooms, these bathrooms, the high-touch surfaces have never been cleaner, which is an incredible gratitude towards our cleaning staff. The additional cleaners that our human resources and finance department were able to hire upwards of 15 part-time cleaners, many of who shifted over from food service or transportation to help us out. And and of course, our own staff who's doing a significant amount of cleaning in their own areas and in their own classrooms. So the place is extremely clean. We have thousands of masks. Our staff and our students have done an incredible job maintaining mask wearing at a high level. And I can't thank them enough from our four-year-olds in pre-K to our 18-year-old seniors. We've been wearing the masks. I know it's unpleasant sometimes, but people are starting to get used to them. We have the mask breaks where we're able to, but we really appreciate that safety and and health that people are displaying from mask wearing to social distancing as much as possible to washing hands and other hygiene that's really important. I do believe that if we do get a case or two of COVID in our district, whether it's staff or students, and I can't guarantee this, but I do really strongly feel that if we keep up with the mask wearing, the social distancing and stay as clean as possible in terms of our facilities, we will significantly limit the amount of people that A would get sick, which is the most important thing and would also need to be quarantined. So if we can limit those numbers, if we do, and when we do get some cases, then we are going to be in great shape to continue in-person instruction and hopefully, which is our entire goal of everyone here, to get back to full time. So the negative, however, of this health and safety is our financial cost. I I will always be transparent with the community in terms of our budget. You've done an incredible job over the last few months to support our district with that budget vote in June. So we're going to keep it transparent around these numbers, but currently we're on track to to potentially spend over $300,000 on additional costs due to COVID, due to the cleaning situation, our PPE equipment, some of the technology, infrastructure, and just overall staff and maintaining the the education that we need to try to maintain. So that's a there's a significant cost to it. We have budgeted, you know, an amount of surplus in the 2021 budget that can support this. We are hopeful around that. We will be able to support that $300,000 excessive cost due to this. That does depend significantly on whether we get our full state aid or not. We had about $400,000 taken away from state aid for 1920. We have not heard yet whether we're going to get more state aid taken away from 2021. If that does happen in conjunction with the additional costs for the COVID COVID situation, then we are going to have to make some tough choices as we move through the next few months, but we will be completely transparent with you about it. And we're hopeful that we don't have to do that. And we will certainly begin to communicate with you both as a community and some in smaller community groups as we move through the fall and winter and certainly with the entire community around our budget process for the 2122 school year. But there is a significant cost to this and we are looking for any ways or as many ways as possible to limit those costs and be as efficient as possible. That's health and safety. Another update, attendance policy. So another mandate from our state is to have students take attendance when they're not in session in person. What does that mean? Well, the state is asking that and actually is telling all districts to take attendance every day for kids. Basically, I'm going to explain that in a second. And this is involving making sure that our kids are going to school at least 180 days during the school year. And in order for us to get our full state aid allotment, whatever that might be at the end of the year. So this is another mandate from the state. It's not our idea to do this, but we need to follow through with it in order to support the state aid that we need to support the district. So starting on Monday, September 28th, all grades seven through 12 students, both hybrid and 100% remote and as well as the pre-case students in the hybrid model. They're going to, you're all going to submit your attendance by logging into school tool on your mornings that the cohort is learning remotely. Now, that's pretty complex. I'm sorry to say it that way. But basically, let's take the 712 kids. If you're 100% hot remote or hybrid on the days that your cohort is not in person, you're going to take a few seconds, log into school tool, which will show us that you are attending your coursework that day. And it is also a spot on there to make sure that you can put down whether you understand what you're supposed to do that day or not. That's for our 712 students, both in the hybrid and the 100% online model on the cohort on the days that you're not in person, your cohort's not in person. The same rule is for the pre-case student, pre-K to sixth grade students who are in the hybrid model on the days you're not in person in school, you or your parents will take a quick login to a school tool and mark you present. Now, for our 100% online students in pre-K through sixth grade, you're going to log in every day for a few seconds and mark that you're present, either you or your parents. Now, the good news is on our website and make sure I want to make sure I have the right information here. If you click on our chat, if on our website and you click on your child's school and then click on parent-student daily routine, there's actually a great chart, a sheet of directions on how to do this, as well as a very easily navigable a chart that you can navigate and really look at and understand much clearer than what I just explained. That's on our website. It explains the direction. Again, the chart tells you exactly what to do depending on whether you're in the blue cohort, gold cohort, whether you're a seven through 12 student or a K through six student. In addition, we're going to take this chart and these directions and email them to you tomorrow morning at some point via Blackboard Connect. So every parent will get these these documents in email form in both Spanish and English. And again, we're going to have these posted as of tonight on our website if you have questions. Again, it's something that will take a few seconds, but it's another added responsibility for our parents and guardians and students. I understand that, but we don't have a choice around it. So if you have any questions, please just look at our website. Email your child's teacher if you have questions. We're not worried about it this week. We wanted to give you a heads up tonight. Make sure you look at it before Monday. We're going to start this process on Monday. So that's some conversations around health and safety, attendance, overall thanks to our community. You as parents and guardians, certainly our staff and our students. So now I want to talk a little bit about the thought exchange that we put up this weekend. I know I'm getting some great questions already on Facebook Live. I'm going to try to get to some of those later this hour. And again, I'll answer those over the next couple of days or we'll answer those over the next couple of days. So as the thought exchange, if you remember, it's a great tool to use where you can put down your own thoughts and then other people can can go in there and rate the thoughts on a scale of one to five, five being with strongly agree, one being strongly disagree. What I did is I looked at the numbers as of three o'clock today. We had over 246 participants who actually shared thoughts, which is a great number. We had 241 participants who rated the thoughts and we had 300 participants who interacted with thoughts in some way. So and I think overall, we had over 400 or 500 people take a look at it. I don't know how many of those are individual people or single or people doing it multiple times, but to have over 200 people look at these thoughts, create thoughts and then participate in ranking the thoughts is fantastic. Just another example of this community and your interaction with the school district to make us better. So let me read through some themes. We had over, let's see, I think we had over 500 actual thoughts. I looked at the theme portion of the thought exchange. And I took roughly, I looked at the first 80 to 100 of them. I haven't been able to look at all 500 thoughts. There are many similarities across them. So I tried to group the most common similarities. I'll talk about a few of them now and then we'll we'll continue to dialogue around these topics because they are challenging, as you know. So one of the topics is hybrid students who aren't in school. So let me read you a few of these. Hybrid students, in my opinion, are not receiving the quality instructional materials on off days that they deserve. Students will never make a year's growth in literacy with that type of support. Another person or another group of people writes, I am disappointed about the distance learning piece of the hybrid. There is no instructional piece. There's just assignments and independent learning. Some other districts are streaming remote days or are in-person five days. Why can't Victor do the same? Some more thoughts along these lines. Teachers and students are still confused about the virtual learning sets at the elementary level. Children need more guidance than what they are expected to do while at home. I do not understand why the days when my child is at home that he isn't following along online, there should be a camera in class for kids at home when they're not in school. While I appreciate all that has been done, children going to school for two days and then having five days off is not a good plan. There's no possible way that they are getting the full or real education that they deserve. Why can't we zoom like some other districts are doing? So as you heard that, and there's more comments tied to that, there's there's certainly on some people's part some concern and frustration over the lack of online experiences when the kids are not in school during the hybrid model. So let me talk a little bit about that. I heard I heard comments such as engagement in high-quality materials, instructional pieces, overall engagement with live instruction and following a schedule. So let me first say this point. Engagement does not have to be live synchronous instruction on the days that kids aren't in school. In fact, to have hours of live synchronous instruction where a child is sitting staring at a computer screen is not necessarily the best thing for the kids and not necessarily engaging. So there's a difference between engagement and live instruction through Zoom or Google Meet. That doesn't mean live instruction isn't important, but there can be a significant difference in that. So we have to be cognizant of what is teaching. And if you know, like, you know, from some of our earlier conversations, you know, great teaching is not sitting and talking to kids for 40 minutes while the kids sit there and think about their baseball game or what they're going to eat for lunch that day. Great teaching is short bursts of direct instruction, but then multiple experiences where kids do the work and produce work that's matched to what the teacher wants the kids to learn, which should be matched to our standards. So lots of work by our kids and relevant and engaging work. That is critical. So I guess what I'm trying to tell people is that as we start, and again, we're in the, what, I think our third or halfway through our second full week of school, that the thing to keep a focus on is on those days that our kids are not in school in person, do we have the materials on Google Classroom to keep kids engaged for a significant amount of times time in relevant and rigorous experiences? That's really what the key is. And that's what we're trying to accomplish. And it doesn't have to be listening to a teacher or somebody talk for 20 to 30 minutes. It very well may be the materials on Google, Google Classroom that the teacher has gone over already and then engages the kid. And that's what we're striving for. That's my first point around this. The second point is similar to what I just said. We've had two and a half weeks. Our staff and our teachers, I know, are working extremely hard. I've seen it over and over as I take my walkthroughs every day, pretty much through different buildings, as well as talk to the leadership staff and our teachers. They're working extremely hard to focus on connecting with kids first. Building the social emotional relationship that was extremely difficult to have last spring. Making sure we assess our kids in terms of where are they with their learning towards the standards that we're going to begin to really start to teach to. And then developing routines for learning that are completely different than in any previous year, because we know a big chunk of those routines are when the kids aren't in front of us and are at home where you're having to be there. I know many of you are having an adult with them and doing lots of work as well. So setting up those routines for learning is really the main focus, along with the social emotional connection in building an understanding of your kids and where they are currently with academics. That's our been our focus as a staff the last two and a half, the first two and a half weeks. And we need to do that to get our kids more independent when they're at home. That doesn't mean our teachers aren't putting out content and significant curriculum in order for kids to learn, but that will grow over the next few weeks as well. So my first point is, again, things don't have to be live to be engaging. My second point is it's been two and a half weeks. We are, I've seen the work that our teachers are doing, and I know there's many positives around it. And I know they're working very hard to build those routines and those social emotional connections. This is not easy, whether it's our elementary kids or our secondary students either. This is a difficult routine. We will never be able to, in my opinion, match the level of instruction and engagement in an online setting that we can when the kids are in front of us. So it's going to be a challenging experience when kids are not in front of us. However, we will look to do the best we can and improve with a growth mindset, which is why we have such great staff to get it as close to that as possible. But please understand, especially as I think of our youngest learners, four, five, six, seven years old, and the incredible work you have to do as adults to keep them engaged in an online setting. We know that's challenging and that's going to be challenging. And we'd rather, to be quite honest with you, have the kids in front of us every day because we know that's the best way to teach them. There is a place for live instruction. We do hear you around that. You make great points. And I know some of that, you know, more of it might be focused at the secondary level right now than even the elementary level. But we do hear you and we are always assessing better ways and and efficient ways to do that. But we're going to need to do it with our staff and make sure our staff has input in what that looks like. So I guess what I'm saying is we hear you. We hear the input around many of you around the the days that you're not in school. We ask you to give it even more of a chance as we move through the next few weeks. Our staff will create the engaging and relevant experiences that are necessary for those days. And we're going to continue to reflect on our practice and work collaboratively with our teachers to make decisions on whether we need to tweak things or change things as we move forward, but we're going to do that together. So I wanted to touch base around that. I would encourage you, again, I'm going to go back to a communication piece that we've talked about numerous times last year. The first line of communication is your child's teacher. If you're frustrated or your child's struggling in those areas, please seek out that teacher, talk to the teacher. If you have further questions, talk to your child's school counselor and or child's administrators at the building level. They know the best to the best level of what your children need and they can listen to your feedback. We want two-way communication as much as possible. I know our building leaders are doing a tremendous job giving you information and sending you information. We're also looking at different ways to receive information from you, similar to what we've done here at the district level to make sure we have that two-way communication going and we're hearing your input. So do that. Stay, you know, continue to focus that with your teachers and your counselors and your building administrators, because I know that can go a long way. So this topic certainly isn't going to go away. Days that your kids aren't in school. And how do we keep it as engaging and efficient as possible for everyone? We're going to continue to look at ways to do that and build on what the successes are and make improvements where we need to. Another theme, it's another theme around these, the thought exchange was the most important thing to me was that kids were comfortable and happy to be back. I wish Victor had synchronized learning on remote days. We've talked about that a little bit. Very glad to have kids back. Students need to be in school for learning and social development. It's important to have more opportunities to share in a couple of weeks when the kids have gone through a couple of normal weeks. Completely agree. That's one of the points that I mentioned earlier. At what point will the district reassess and see when we can get back to normal? Our county has practically no COVID cases. My kids want to be in school. So I did check out the the COVID dashboard for Ontario County. I think we have a total since COVID hit in March of 2020, we've had a total of 400 cases. Currently, from my understanding, there's zero people in the hospital related to COVID in Ontario County, which is great news. We want to continue to stay healthy. And as I answered before, at what point will the district reassess? That will occur through the state and their relaxation of social distancing guidelines, as well as the Ontario County Health Department, which will then support us with guidance around how to do that. Once we receive that, then we would be able to go back to full time, certainly with safety measures in place. Knowing that that would also be a cost, there would be a cost to that, and we continue to update that with you as we move forward. Just some more comments. See if I have these already. Really glad kids are in class, hoping we get five days. Would love continued full class interaction with our teachers. Gratitude to everyone who worked so hard to make things as safe as they could under difficult circumstances and who welcomed our kids so warmly. If numbers continue to remain low, will opportunities to reevaluate more in-class meetings be an option or is that state determined by Governor Cuomo? It is state determined. We're certainly going to review more options within the confines of that. Thank you to the many different people who've commented on the 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 warmness of our staff, the welcoming of our staff and how our different constituents have really made this place safe. So so I wanted to make sure I read those comments as well. Let's see some other themes. Here's a couple. It's unconscionable that there aren't enough computers to go around. If we can borrow for If we can borrow for a field and sports fields, can we borrow to make sure kids have computers? All right, and then there's another comment that's related to that. If I can find it. Victor is behind on technology. Districts all over the area already provided or have on order enough Chromebooks for every student. There should be no expectation that devices brought by parents will be brought to school. So we're one of, I'd say, 15 to 20% of the districts in this area that are not what's called one-to-one, where the district has purchased devices for all the kids to be able to, depending on their age level, take home and work with and then bring back to school. That's because over the last few years, it's never been budgeted for, and there hasn't been any strategic plan necessary to support this type of initiative. That is changing. I would like to publicly thank our entire leadership staff, our incredible librarians and technology people in our, in our staff, as well as our teachers who have been really pushing technology and helping each other to support technology, and certainly our Director of Technology, Angela Affronte, because without them and without her leadership, we wouldn't have what I call a pseudo-one-to-one initiative, which does combine Chromebooks from the school and bring your own device from home for age groups that are appropriate for it. We know that that's not as ideal as having everybody having a Chromebook, but to be quite honest, we don't have the money to afford that at this time. So this is the next best option. And from a lot of dip-sticking that's been going on with teachers and leadership staff with students and different parents, we are finding that overall, it's working very effectively. It is not perfect. We certainly understand that is a challenge to bring, for many of you, devices from home, but is the one way, especially as our kids get older, to really maximize the work that's being done in school on the multiple days that they're home. So it is a pseudo-one-to-one initiative. It's not like 80% of the districts around us, both in Ontario and Monroe and Wayne County, but it is a really outside-the-box look at a way to try to support increased technology. Now, as our staff learns more and more how to use Google Classroom, as we become, as we practice with it, as we become more efficient with it, which will take time and energy and practice, we're going to find more innovative ways to do it. We're also going to need to plan from a financial standpoint, a way to more efficiently really catch up to some of these other districts who are using one-to-one technology and have the resources and finance to support that. And that's what we're going to do as part of a strategic planning process in the future. Again, this community has been unbelievable. We passed a 7% tax rate increase. You passed a 7% tax rate increase in June. Many of you are wondering, how does that not take into account additional computers for our kids? But it didn't. Remember, that was mainly to keep our existing staff and begin to populate a completely underfunded reserve bank that needs to be supported. It also was there to, you know, take, take into account some of the unique needs of the district. And again, that existing staffing that in many cases is still understaffed. So that's the reality, but we do need to look forward around purchasing technology and technology devices and continued focus on that. And to be honest with you, to, to look at staff that could be completely dedicated to technology integration, both from the hardware and infrastructure end and from the instructional end. That needs to happen as we move forward. Some other comments from Thought Exchange. Let's see if I have the right sheet in front of me. It would be helpful to have a calendar like fourth grade ELA did of what exactly it is expected each day as far as work when students are home. It's important that we know what is expected. Another comment, it would be helpful if teachers would put the assignment posted date and the assignment due date on each assignment posted in Google Classroom. My children get so many emails, and it can be overwhelming to know exactly when everything is due. On a similar venue, if teachers could categorize assignments as such in Google Classroom with due dates, it might be better. My daughter is working through a list of what is due, and it seems to be a long list. Then she goes into some class folders and sees assignments that do not have due dates. It is somewhat overwhelming to search everywhere to find these. We still need more tips as parents and tutorials for parents, learning the ins and outs of how to check in on your child's work progress and assignments do. We still sometimes find assignments in different places, still not feeling 100% confident that I know what I'm doing as a parent to catch up and find those assignments and due dates. So that's been a theme as well, and I know our teachers and staff are working very hard on, you know, putting assignment due dates, classifying dates on assignments and trying to streamline emails. If we're going to make a mistake as a district, our, our staff has made the mistake, I don't even call it a mistake. If we're going to make it, let me say it this way, if we're going to make an error in any way, we're going to over-communicate. That's what our staff has done. That can result in some significant emails, which we need to look from a district standpoint on how to be even more efficient. We're looking at different ways to do that. I know there's some similar, there's some districts near us that use certain apps to streamline the communication. We're looking at those as I speak. We're looking at ways to efficiently send emails to just kids and parents who have specific needs in those areas, whether it's a blue cohort or a gold cohort or the 100% online learners. So we're looking at all those different ways, but I really appreciate the staff really overextending the communication and making sure things are done. Also, you may find some assignments without due dates on them, mainly because our staff doesn't want the kids to be stressed around those due dates. I know exactly why that's happened in some cases, and I appreciate our staff for doing that. You're going to see more consistent due dates on there, because we are moving through, like I said, like we've talked about, our third week of school. But I know that many of this has been done to try to actually alleviate some stress on kids, not trying to stress them out more. But those are good points that we're going to listen to and certainly try to make the most of it. Another point, and this is specific to the junior high school, and I'm not going to talk about it too much, because I know our fantastic junior high principal, Brian Gee, actually recognized this last year when I started before we went out because of COVID. But there's some comments around the junior high kids only get two days in person, so why do they need different multiple study halls in those two days? Another comment that I think was related to that, the amount of study hall time is a problem at the junior high. Students should have instruction on their live days. They already have three days at home. Can we, can we do without the study hall? So unfortunately, right now, the study halls is a, is a factor of the junior high schedule. And I know there's study halls at the senior high as well, but because of the blocked scheduling, you might not get as many in a particular day. Remember, the junior high has those 38-minute periods. They made a conscientious and I think a very positive decision to have, in the junior high sense, meet with kids every day. But they had to shorten the periods, and those study halls had to come with them, because we couldn't drastically change the, the, the schedule to increase time for other classes, because that would take staffing increases that we didn't have and would also potentially create scheduling issues, especially around courses like art, music, and phys ed. So this will take a longer, deeper look in terms of the schedule of the junior high. And it's not something we're going to fix in the next few weeks or few months. We understand the frustration. I really appreciate the junior high trying to minimize those study halls as much as possible, the one a day. I know there's potentially some people have two a day, and that can be extremely frustrating, having only two days of school. But I know the work they did to try to go into the small classes and getting these, these schedules done. And I know from Brian and Dave Thering's leadership that we're looking at that schedule from a 50,000-foot lens to see over the next year to two years if we need to, to adjust that as well. But we understand those study hall, that study hall piece. We're going to continue, I know the junior high is also going to continue to look at, you know, different ways to utilize those study halls as we move forward. So that's that. Those are the main themes that I found. Again, there's many other topics from the, the Thought Exchange that, that, you know, go beyond those five different themes, but I wanted to pick some just to talk about right now so that, so that we could get really a sense of, of what people were thinking. And these, these aren't going to go away, right? These are going to be consistent challenges that we need to work through. And the, the proof in the pudding will be as we move through, you know, October and have our next town hall towards the end of October and move through your communication and assessment of how your kids are doing, we make progress in these areas as much as we can. Before I get to live Facebook questions, I want to talk about athletics, extracurricular activities, drama, and musicals. We are making a conscientious effort to have our kids in front of us as much as possible in the safest way possible. So we know, and again, it sounds like a broken record, that if we get our kids in front of us, we can do a better job with them, and it's the best for them. So we are encouraging our kids not only to come to school as much as they safely can within their confines of their parents' needs, but also to participate, starting next week, in extracurricular experiences as well as athletics. We are starting athletics at the JV and varsity level on Monday. Those are for the sports that were deemed able to be started by the state. We didn't have choices around sports like football, cheerleading, and volleyball. Those have been moved to a different season, starting in March. The state mandated that. So we're going to start the other sports that are able to be, to begin in the fall. Again, JV varsity will start September 28th. And then modified, we hope to have a full slate of modified sports in the fall that are able to, again, that are not considered high-risk, starting October 5th. I encourage you as students and parents to get your kids out for those athletic experiences. We are going to delay practice times till an hour to two hours after school starts so that we can lessen the amount of people in one spot, as well as the traffic and transportation, and then which supports our cleaning. It's going to look a little differently. We're going to do a second health screening for our kids involved in these athletics. Certainly locker rooms are going to be challenging, so we'll have more information on that. I know our, our Director of Health, Phys ed, and Athletics, Mr. Wymer, is doing a presentation to fall athletes and their parents tomorrow night, I believe. That's a really important presentation, and it's going to be recorded so that you can watch it. But we're excited about that. We're also excited about extracurricular activities that are going to be starting. And we're going to try to start all of our extracurricular activities. The most, most of them will be virtual to begin with. And then we would hope to over time, as we move through, again, this progression of being able to open up more, hopefully we can get more in-person extracurricular activities as we move through October and November. We are doing in-person marching band, starting on Monday. Had a great meeting with the marching band director this morning. A ton of excitement in our marching band kids in our community. It's going to be full go with the marching band. They have some extensive safety procedures in place with social distancing. You know, the outdoors is going to be our friends, it will be almost completely outdoors. But I'm really looking forward to seeing our band practice and do their thing. Now, there's no band, necessary band competitions that are going on because of COVID, but that's not going to stop the Victor Central School District. So thrilled to have our marching band starting on Monday. Also had a fantastic meeting with some of our leadership around dramas and musicals and plays with the secondary leadership today. We are hopeful that we are going to start a fall drama at the high school, as well as a fall musical at the junior high school within the next two weeks. It may look, again, a little bit different than your typical fall drama, as well as fall musical at the junior high, they're incredible presentations, we get that. We're not going to be able to have a full auditorium of spectators in, end of October and in November for the junior high musical. But we are going to have a musical, and we are going to have the drama, and we're going to have lots and lots of kids involved in it in a safe way. And there are already brainstorming ways to sing and have a orchestra pit, as well as figuring out a way whether to livestream it or do something taped to make sure that we can get this out to the community. But we will have drama and musicals, and certainly going forward, we have many more performing arts activities that we want to have, including the big senior high musical in the spring. So we're looking forward to that. Remember, we were able to get that one in last year before we went out. We also have our musical ensembles in person at the, at the seven through 12 level. At the four through six level, they're going, they're virtual at this point, but we are having in-person lessons for that. So we're looking forward to, to ways to make sure that we have our concerts, you know, broadcast and done, so that you can watch and appreciate your kids and their incredible musical talent. So music, drama, musicals, extracurricular activities, athletics, they're all going to be going on. They're going to be shaped to some degree by the safety needs that we wanted, obviously have to do to make sure everyone is safe. But we're going to have those, and that's an initiative from this district. So very thankful to all the adults, both community members and staff members that are there here to make it happen. So let me take some live questions from Facebook now. Thanks to the great Aaron Isaacs, who is on with me, although you don't see him every month. He is not only running the show, but sending a variety of questions to me. I'll get to some of them over the next few minutes. Are the state requirements that you're referencing published publicly somewhere? So yes, they're actually published, the CDC, which is our national guidance, they're published on that website. They're also published through the New York State Ed Department, as well as the New York State Department of Health in terms of social distancing mandates and requirements, mask-wearing mandates requirement, cleaning requirements. It's also published on our website as part of our reopening plan. So again, I'm always encouraging people to go right to the website. We, they, our staff has done an incredible job, both at the district level and the building level, to update their websites. The reopening plan is a great resource to look at, and it does include the mandates necessary from New York State. That reopening plan is adjusted. For example, we will be adjusting it for the new attendance requirements in the next couple of days. So that's adjusted, it's a living document, and then put back on the website when there is. Are there lunches available when school is out? Yes, there are lunches available. I'd encourage you to go to the website, which is attached to our website for food service. Also, call or actually email your child's school around specifics of that. Are you still in need of cleaners? At this moment, we are not, but we may, very well maybe. I'll tell you what we are in need of, though. And again, I can't, I can't mention cleaners without thanking them and all the great work they're doing. But I'll tell you what we are in need of, we're in need, need of substitutes. One of our bigger concerns right now is we're, we're telling our staff, justifiably so, that you need to stay home when you feel ill. We do not want to subject our staff to unnecessary safety concerns, and we do not want to cause more people, kids and students, to get sick. So we want our staff to stay home when they feel ill. That means that we're going to need more substitute teachers, substitute teacher aides, and potentially substitute clerical people. So if you're interested in that, you do not have to have a teaching certification to substitute as a teacher or a teacher aide. You simply need to have some form of education beyond high school, and then really, all you have to do is apply. So go to our website. We have, we have our, in our, in terms of our hiring piece to the website, we have the application for teacher aides and substitute teachers. I, I, big shout out to the town of Victor and Farmington for putting that application up in a variety of different websites and social media places. It's hard not to find the website for substitutes, just a, a really, I guess, selfish plug to, if anyone who's interested and you have the time to work with kids, it's an incredible opportunity for you. We'd love to have you as a substitute. What if the students do not log in for the attendance policy? It'll be similar as if they were marked absent in person. I'm thinking you're going to get a robocall, and you'll get some time to rectify that. We're not going to, you know, how do I put this? Similar to the due date piece that I said a few minutes ago, you know, we're going to have compassion around that. We understand that, you know, people forget to do things, but we're going to really try to develop that consistency of checking in for attendance. And it's similar to the expectations that you've done such a beautiful job with in terms of the health screening form. So we really appreciate your cooperation of that, around that. Does attendance need to be done by a certain time or hopeful that it's done by 8:30 in the morning on the kid, the days that the kids are virtual? Again, it's a little bit complex for our secondary students. Again, it's a little bit complex for our secondary students, but basically you're going to check in a hundred percent online kids. We can't forget this group of phenomenal students and parents. I know you're doing a ton of work at home. We have over five hundred and eighty, I think, kids right now, a hundred percent online. And in fact, I'd like to dedicate parts of some of these town halls to that group of community members because we know you're working hard and you deserve to make sure you have input on these things. But in terms of secondary students who are a hundred percent online, you only need to check in on the days your cohort is in person, not the days you're not there. It's different for the case pre K through six kids who are a hundred percent online. You're going to check in every day, but we'd like you to do it by eight thirty. Is the six foot even with mask thing truly a mandate for public schools? Or is it a general guideline for society at large? I would love to review the official state guidance you're referring to. Please share this material. We'll do on that one. It's basically, it is mandated by our state. What's, what's mandated and I'm going to paraphrase, phrase the language. A social distancing is mandated of six feet or more. It's designated as six feet or more. Mask wearing is mandated for less than six feet, for more, I'm sorry, for greater than six feet distance and is strongly encouraged by school districts, even when kids are less than six feet. So the mask wearing is mandated for greater than six feet. It's strongly encouraged for less than six feet. And the six feet is mandated in terms of social distancing. And it was a significant challenge to overcome. Again, one of the other things you have to understand is we're also preparing for if students or staff end up, which we hope it doesn't happen, but end up testing positive for COVID. We know from our consistent communications with our county, counties, I'll say, because especially Monroe and Ontario health directors, that if kids are masked up, if staff are masked up and we're sustaining that social distancing for a significant amount of time, there's much less chance that your child will have to be quarantined for two weeks at least. And large chunks of classes would have to be closed down or schools closed down, as is the case for some of our districts, not only in this area, but in the, in the regional area. It doesn't guarantee that that won't happen, but it significantly increases the chances of us staying open and large groups of students not to be quarantined at home for, for multiple weeks if an individual student or staff member gets COVID. Can we utilize a better platform for online learning or at least make sure content posted is usable on tablets and iPads? We don't have computers for our children and they can't access half the home content on the devices we have to them. I'm going to say a simple message to that particular comment. Please, please talk to your schools, your child's teacher and or administrator, email them. We are doing whatever we can. People are bending over backwards to get as many Chromebooks as we can and make sure you are supported. We do not want to have kids on devices that they cannot access the information that other kids are accessing. That is not our goal. So please contact your child's administrator and or teacher and we'll, we'll do whatever we can to rectify it. What do you need to do to get the funding for every child to get a Chromebook? Is it a special one-time vote? I think you should do whatever is required. I want, I don't want to sound unhappy as I am so grateful for everything the district is doing. But we need to fix this. Every child should have a Chromebook. There definitely shouldn't be anyone on a waitlist. Well, I mean, I appreciate the comment. You know, the two areas that we could use additional funding in that is most relevant, that could support the tax base and all the work that you have to do with your own taxes is state aid, which is in significant jeopardy right now. But where, where Victor has historically received less percent of their state aid than many other districts. We receive approximately sixty one percent of the amount the formula says we're supposed to receive. Many districts around us are receiving seventy to eighty percent or more. Some of the districts who have lost enrollment over the last ten years are receiving a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty percent of their state aid. And we don't want to take away from those districts. They need it. But we're saying it's, it's quite unfair that we're receiving sixty percent of it. And there's some districts that are receiving less than us. So advocating with our state senators. I know there's an election coming up in a couple of weeks. That will be an important election. And no matter who the winner is for the state senate, we're going to work closely with that person to support, to hopefully get them to support our school district and certainly our state assembly people. The other is what's been, I've really appreciated the collaboration with Jack Maron from Victor, the mayor of the town of Victor. We don't receive any sales tax from Ontario County. We know that's been an issue. We talked about that numerous times. We've kind of held off at this point, but we are going to have conversations with county leadership around that in the near future. We know the county's suffering as well. And we know many people are suffering with the economic situation, but we're hopeful that it's turning around a bit. And we are going to have those conversations where potentially we could get a, a win-win around sales tax. But any support with your county leaders around the sales tax would be greatly appreciated. Where hopefully we're not taking sales tax from, from resources and companies and businesses, but we're trying to support one another around it. Do we send the school a bill for the purchase of tablets or laptops? No, unfortunately, you don't send us a bill if you're purchasing the laptops or tablets at home to support your child's learning. Unfortunately, that's a purchase that homeowners would make. We understand that that's a difficult purchase. We, I think we sent out over six to seven hundred Chromebooks, potentially more. But we know that doesn't cover everyone. So we know that's a cost to you. We appreciate that. Again, you know, in terms of what we need to do financially and fiscally as a district, our goal would be over time to get enough Chromebooks for everyone where you wouldn't have to purchase it. In the spring, we had more communication from the teachers with explanations on what is assigned so that we know how to track their work. We haven't received this so far. Will a weekly calendar be coming? And that would be very welcome. Again, you know, I know our teachers are doing, uh, doing their best to try to communicate. We've just started. This is the third week, so I fully anticipate continued and maybe and potentially increased communication around calendars and assignments. I'm almost positive in every building that is already in place. But I would encourage you to reach out to your child's teacher and talk to your teacher about that. Again, another comment about weekly calendars and assignments. Let's see. It's frustrating seeing multiple emails about a new assignment, just to discover it's just a slide or a video and not anything for the kids to actually do. It would be easier for parents and children, in my opinion, to do their own thing with other resources. So children are actually doing something and not just watching something. I think this refers to some of our youngest learners in the ECS and the primary school. Thank you for that feedback. Again, that's something that you're going to want to talk to your building leadership about. And I know they're constantly working with our teachers to, to look at different ways to support assignments. I know again, that we've been over communicating and I appreciate that with our staff. And understand though, that can be confusing to some degree, but we're going to continue to work through that over the next few weeks. But again, communicate with the building leadership. Can J, junior high students start using lockers, please? Their backpacks are very heavy and with winter coming, it's going to be impossible to carry everything all day. It's a good suggestion. Again, I'd leave that up to the junior high leadership, but they certainly will see this. And again, I'm, I'm thinking, I know the way our junior high, just like the other four buildings operate, there's eliciting feedback from parents and staff. So that's a, that's a good comment. I'm trying to look for other comments right now. Just going to refresh this actually real quick here. If a vaccine comes out, will it be mandatory that all students have to get it? That would be up to the state expectations and our health department expectations similar to other vaccines and immunizations. Certainly it may go a long way in supporting us to be able to come back full time. I'm very hopeful that vaccines will be available at some point. But again, that's really up to the state and, and national government and, and really our world leadership and how we do it. Is there any chance the district will offer synchronous learning on remote learning days? Many other local districts are offering this for their students and it seems that this type of structure would be very beneficial. Again, hear your comments, understand your comments. Talked about that a few minutes ago. There certainly is a chance that we're going to adjust and evolve as we move forward, but that's going to be dependent again, on our leadership staff and the input from our teaching staff as well as your feedback with your teachers. Because as I said before, live synchronous learning can be different than great instruction. And if it is listening to a teacher or another person talk for a long period of time, especially as our kids are younger, it may not be the best mode and, and value for our time. And in fact, it may disengage people. So we need to do this from a, from a, you know, a professional development standard. But we're going to be communicating with our staff about, you know, ways to continuously improve. And, and if that does happen, we would certainly communicate with you. I know we're always looking at what's working and what could be improved. So it's right around seven thirty at this point. I know there's probably a lot of other Facebook questions and we're going to get to those or I will get to those with the help of, with the help of some of our staff. Again, communication is a two-way street. So we're not only going to be communicating with you around important information, but we hope to get information back from you to give us feedback similar to what you did tonight. Town halls one time a month at least. Some type of weekly communication from myself once a week. We're not going to blast you with robocalls every week, I promise. But we will give a one or two of those a month and, and make sure there's important information and certainly with emails. We're going to continue to dialogue with you about your needs. Again, two big thank yous. Thank you to our parents and our guardians and our students. That's one big, that's one out of the two for your incredible work. And I know you're, it's a big commitment from all of you and really a special thanks to all of our staff members. You know, you're out there putting it on the line every day. You're there despite a lot of the challenges and safety concerns that the society has. But you're working really hard and I appreciate it immensely as your superintendent. And I love the growth mindset that all of you have, that we're going to continue to again, capitalize on the many, many things that are working and work together to make improvements on areas that, that need to be improved. So appreciate all of you. Have a safe evening. Great to have all your kids back. And if you have any questions for me personally, please email me and we'll definitely be in touch. Take care.